Welcome to You the People. In this program, we will provide you with interviews and information from and about the people who affect your lives. Our program may include conversations with candidates, elected or appointed officials, town department heads, and more. We will delve into the kitchen table issues that make a difference in our towns and region. I'm your host, Julie Thompson. Let's get started. Welcome to You the People, and I'm so pleased to be joined by Bill Ramsey, who, for the first time here on the show, who is the Chair of Hingham's Select Board. But before we get into what you do for Hingham and what you do for the Select Board, can we talk a little bit about you, the person, and your background?
Sure.
When I was doing some research on you, I was amazed at all the different things you've been through. You were Assistant Chief Counsel for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. You've been the Assistant DA in Plymouth County. You were prosecutor for the U.S. Army Judge Advocate Generals, or JAGs as people know them. You served in Iraq and Afghanistan. You taught Constitution and Military Law on the faculty at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point. Talk about all that.
Oh, well, thanks for having me here, Julie. Thrilled to be here today. Yeah, so, you know, I grew up in Hingham. I've lived here my entire life, other than my time in the military. When I was in college, I did ROTC. I was really interested in military service, thought it would be beneficial to me personally to do it and to serve my country. So when I went through ROTC, I was going to be a pilot in the military. I was going to be a helicopter pilot, but unfortunately, one of my eyes caused me to fail. The eye test, you have to have perfect vision for that. So I went to law school, and then after law school, I joined the military in 2001. I was assigned to an airborne unit, so even as an attorney, I jumped out of planes with infantry soldiers and other Barrett troopers. Was there until in September of 2001, when obviously our country was attacked. Being in an airborne unit, in a unit that deploys quickly, we mobilized early on in the conflict, so I got the opportunity to go to Afghanistan, which was, you know, looking back, it was kind of a miserable experience when I was over there, but looking back at it, it's a very impactful life experience.
Yes, yes.
I came back from that. I was prosecuting cases in the Army. I liked prosecuting cases, liked being in trial, doing trial work. And then they assigned me to West Point. Taught at the United States Military Academy at West Point. Taught a class that was on Constitution and Military Law. I think they wanted a combat veteran to teach the class, so I'd been over there. And then in 2004, I got sent to Iraq. I'm not sure if you remember the Abu Ghraib prison abuse situation? So I was one of the lawyers who investigated that during my time in Baghdad, worked on that investigation, came back, taught a little more at West Point, left active duty, but I stayed in the reserves, and I recently retired after 28 years. And the last eight, I had the privilege of serving as a military judge, which was really amazing to me. So thank you. Yeah, it was great. I've had a wonderful experience in the military. I often deal with, I talk to a lot of children from Hingham who want to go in the military, so I'm always happy to do that and assist in any way I can, which has been great.
Now, what is the difference between military law and constitutional law, or is there none?
Well, there's a little difference. I mean, the military still does uphold constitutional values, but they're not as... But they can be limited, right? For example, like the First Amendment speech of a soldier can be limited while they're in the military, right? They don't have the wide, widespread rights that we would have as citizens. Military soldiers, you know, can't say certain things or do certain things, so they're limited. There are more time, place, man, and restriction in terms of content, but the content can be regulated as well by the Uniform Code of Military Justice. Fourth Amendment is pretty similar. Fifth Amendment is somewhat similar, but the Uniform Code of Military Justice does have some variations on the way that those rights are looked at through the military lens, but they're still there and they're still observed.
Okay, wow. A lot. Then, then you decided to serve in Hingham, and you've done, you've been on the Planning Board, the ZBA, the Recreation Committee, the Fourth of July Parade Committee, Veterans Council, and Select Board. So talk to me about all those different committees and events and things that you've been involved with.
Well, thank you. When I was, when I got back from college, you know, I was, I really wanted to get involved politically and run for office. And, you know, my first year out of college, there was an open spot on the Hingham Recreation Commission, so I'm like, you know, I'm 22, you know, I said to my father, I'm going to run for office. And he's like, what, are you crazy? You're 22 years old and I was going to vote for you? I'm like, well, I'm experienced with the REC. I went there as a camper. I did all their programs. I worked there for so many years. I'm like, I'm friends with the director. I know the people on the commission, so I'm going to run for it. So I ran as a very young person and won my election early on, which was great. So I was involved with the REC Commission, started getting involved with local campaigns, served on the, at the time, we had Memorial Day Veterans Day Committee. I served on that, being in the military. And then my military service commitment came in, so, you know, I left and came back. But when I came back from it, I was, I got involved in Hingham on a couple of different committees. I really liked being involved with the town. You know, having grown up in Hingham, you know, I just know a lot of people and being involved on a lot of different levels, so it was nice to get back involved. Went to the zoning board for a couple of years, done the zoning board, worked on a committee that studied our zoning, and then an opening on the planning board came up, and some of the planning board members encouraged me to run, so I did that. And while I was doing that too, I was still involved with, you know, the Fourth of July Parade Committee and some other committees in town. And, you know, I was on the planning board for about two, almost two, almost three terms, I think, on the planning board, and people had passed, they said, you should run for the Select Board. And my answer was always like, no, I'm not going to do that. And then because I really liked planning. I liked planning, was comfortable there. After a couple of terms, I was learning a lot about land use zoning law.
It's incredible, yeah. You have to know.
And being, you know, a trial attorney and doing mostly criminal work, and this was kind of really enjoyable for me, you know, being an attorney, you want to learn new things. So I loved it. And like, I'm not going to run for Select Board. And then the Select Board, the Select Board member who ultimately succeeded, you know, she was up for reelection. I called her up, I'm like, hey, I just want to make sure, you know, if you're going to run again, I'm going to support you, whatever I can do to help you out. And she said, well, I'm not, I don't think I'm going to run again. So I'm like, oh, that's interesting, you know, and...
Open opportunity.
Yeah, and then people started calling me and said, you should consider running. And I initially said, no, I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm a fan of planning. And then I think enough people contacted me to the point where I'm like, hey, maybe I should give this a shot, and ran my election in 2020, which was halfway through the election, the pandemic hits.
Great.
And you went from running this, you know, campaign where I was going to do all these coffees and go door to door to...
To Zoom.
To Zoom. It was all Zoom. It was all holding signs, socially distanced with masks on and everything. So it was a really an odd, odd time to run a campaign.
Yeah, but you did, and you won.
I did, yeah, I won, and I enjoyed campaigning. I really enjoyed the campaigning part of the job. Like, I know some people who run for town office, they dread the campaigning part. I love it. In fact, some of my friends joke, they say, you know, that we think you like the campaigning part better than the governance part. I'm like, well, the campaigning part's easier, because you can go out there and shake hands and talk to people and do things, but the governance part's always a little more challenging at times.
So your breadth of experience with the town is really invaluable for the position of Board or Select Board, and that's true of any town. There's so much, you literally have to know a little bit about everything in the town when you're on the Select Board. What exactly is the responsibility of the Select Board? And you only have three members, right?
We have three members in Hingham.
Kind of unusual.
So I've had the privilege of serving with some wonderful members, you know. My first year on the Board, I served with Mary Power, who's a longtime Board member. Served with Jill Fisher for five years. Joe just came off the Board. Liz Klein has been a long-term member, and our newest member, Julie Straley, has done a wonderful job early on into her term right now. But the Select Board is the chief executive body for the town. We make decisions regarding policy for police, DPDW, Fire, all of the executive boards and bodies that fall under us, we regulate the bodies to policy decisions. We have a big part in the town budget as well. We certainly weigh into that. We have an advisory committee in Hingham that's wonderful, has a wonderful group of volunteers.
Is that finance and advisory?
Yeah, so it's finance, they do finance and advisory, so the advisory committee can weigh in on all the articles on a warrant for town meeting. I think some towns who just have finance committees, they deal with the finances. Our committee does both. And they're fantastic boards, so we work with them every year in the town budget. The Select Board kind of drives that discussion, because we have the full-time staff a little bit, but the advisory is obviously a big part of it. And they ultimately, ultimately, they present the warrant to town meetings, so ultimately it's their budget that they present.
Right.
But we, you know, a lot of the funds come through the executive branch, so we have to be cognizant of what we're spending, our revenues coming in, and so obviously, we kind of drive that discussion to a big, to a certain extent.
And who actually reports to the Select Board?
Now, we have a Town Administrator, Tom Mayo, is the Town Administrator. In his office, we have assistant Town Administrator for Finance, Michelle Montziger, who's unfortunately leaving us soon. We have Administrator for Operations, Art Robert, and then Tom has an Executive Assistant, and we have an Administrative Assistant in the office.
Okay, so they all kind of fall under the auspices of the Select Board.
They do, I mean, they all work for Tom, but obviously Tom works for us, but we all, we all work together.
Okay, and let's talk about the Select Board's planning and initiatives. So you wanted to talk about three things, basically, then we'll talk about other things, but what about the foster school? Now, what happened there, and what about, pretend that people are watching, they have no idea what the foster school is or what you're talking about.
So the foster school was approved by town meeting in 2022. It was a major capital project for the town, so, and it was like all of it, I'm a Chair now, but my sixth year, but my third year as Chair, we had a major, major capital projects and an override all in the same year. The capital projects were, was to build a new foster school. It's very close to the site that was the school for many years. And we went to town meeting and asked, we need, asked for $113 million to build a brand new school. It's a beautiful school.
Is this K through six, or what is?
K through five.
K through five, okay.
Yeah, it's a wonderful school. It's, I went, and it was very personal for me, that initiative, because I had gone to that school, you know, my brother went to that school, my sister went to that school, all of my friends, growing up in Bradley Woods, all of my friends from North Hingham. So seeing the school needing to be redone and repaired was a very, you know, was personally, I wanted to get personally invested in it. I had three children at the school. My oldest was there, had been through, there since a kindergartner. My other son was there, my daughter was there. So the foster effort, you know, for me as the Chair was huge. And so not only was I advocating for it within town government, but like my wife and I were out holding the signs. I think I put out about 150 yard signs around Hingham, me alone. We had a phenomenal group of volunteers, of school committee leadership, activist groups in town, grassroots people, and just a great effort to do it. My Select Board colleagues were also wonderful. So that came up the same time.
So you got it done.
Yeah, and it, but it all came up the same as the Public Safety Building, which were...
Now, was that a combined police and fire?
Yes, combined police and fire. It's a police headquarters with a North Hingham Fire Unit. So they're going to service North Hingham. The West Hingham Fire Station, obviously, it needed to be replaced. The police station, obviously, they outgrew that, you know, for a couple of years after they were in it.
Right.
So those two, those two efforts came at the same time in the special town meeting in the fall of 2022. Ultimately, we had, went to the town, asked for $113 million for the school and then $40 million to build a new public safety facility. Huge ask, huge ask, but we needed it, you know, we made the case. It was a really amazing effort, because, you know, that night at town meeting, I think we had 1,097 people in the room that night, and 1,105 voted for, only two votes that we could account for were against those projects. It was amazing, we've never had...
So was this the override that they were actually voting on?
So that was the debt exclusion, so, you know, you get, you have to, you have to get it approved at town meeting by two-thirds, and it has to be approved at the ballot by a majority. So that happened in the fall of my Chair year, and then in the spring, you know, we, we looked at our operating budget, not only for the municipal side, but also the school side, and we asked voters to approve an override for $7.9 million. Another huge ask that passed at town meeting by majority, and also passed at the ballot by majority. So that year, so much was going on, I'll tell you, that was like, I was the Chair that year, and it was like, I was, you know, 24/7, I was immersed in, you know, immersed in what we were doing with the town and getting these projects done. So it was wonderful, and the residents supported both, which was great. So it was great involvement, great teams on both of those initiatives, and it was a wonderful, wonderful result to get both of them back.
And those were back in what year?
22, so the capital project 22, and the override passed in 23.
Okay, are those buildings both done at this point?
Both done. The foster school opened in January, so my last child got a chance to get six, a couple of months there, which was great. My two other sons are like, ah, they missed out, you know, but now they're at the middle of school now, having a blast. And the public safety facility, the police actually had their first roll call there yesterday. So they're in there, which is great, so the police are in there. They had the last roll call at the old station yesterday morning, and the first roll call last night. It was kind of a cool moment for our police officers. Fire is ready to go. They're going to be moving in probably mid, we think, mid-July. So it's great. I'm really, after all, for our first responders, you know, it's a beautiful building. You know, we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony in mid-July, so really excited for our town and excited to get that done. I'm excited for the men and women firefighters, they're going to be in that building too. They deserve it.
That is terrific. So what are your goals for 2026?
Yeah, so we, so we recently, you know, we met, the Select Board had two meetings related to goals for 2026 and what are we hoping to accomplish? I mean, and we kind of broke it down into different areas, you know, we had some subparts too, obviously, but, and, but the big areas were, you know, we need to look at capital needs, you know, and I ran for this office, I really wanted to address the capital needs, obviously, the school and the public safety building. But this year, we looked at, okay, where do we need to really have our focus on? And I think we have a laser focused on the Center for Active Living. So the town is going to ask funds to build a Center for Active Living in Bearcove Park. Town meeting approved a design for 28,000 square feet. As we go through this year, we're going to value engineer to see, do we need 28,000 square feet? Can we try to save some money here? Do we need to keep it the way it is? So we're going to have that discussion as we go forward with it, but that's the goal, to build a Center for Active Living in Bearcove Park. That's a, that's probably the biggest focus of our capital goals. We are very happy that we're resolving the litigation involving the South Shore Country Club Pool Project. We're close to getting that, getting that done. It's happy to have that behind us. So that, getting the pool out to bid and working toward building our pool is going to be one of my next objectives.
Right, so let me just clarify a couple of things. So on the Center for Active Living, which is a lot of people call a senior center, but now they're called Seniors for Active Living. So that, that's the other, that's the last kind of big building that you have to do for that population, correct? Right, you've done the fire and the, and the first responders, the police and fire, you've taken care of the schools, and I think all your schools are pretty much in okay shape at this point. So the senior center was the kind of, or the Center for Active Living was the last thing you kind of wanted to, to get done.
True. We do need to replace the high school, the roofs at the Hingham High School are in desperate need of repair, so we're working on that as well, but the building's okay.
The building is okay. Now, the South Shore Country Club, for anyone who doesn't know, the town actually owns that now, okay. When did you take ownership of?
Ah, years ago, I'm trying to think, yeah, a long time ago. It was, it was, I was, I was younger, I might have been in junior high school at the time, but it was many years ago.
Oh, so it's been a long, long time.
Been a long time.
And the pool, what happened to it? For anyone who doesn't know.
Yeah, town meeting of '21, spring of '21, approved a debt exclusion of $8 million for a new pool.
Okay.
Passed through town meeting, passed at the ballot. Initiative at the ballot also passed too. Unfortunately, we had some litigation that slowed the project, with some abutters, had some concerns about the project that went to the court system, but we're happy to have that resolved, and, you know, looking forward to getting the pool built, so it can benefit everybody in town.
So all Hingham residents can belong to the country club and use the pool?
So for the country club to golf, I think you have to have a membership there, but everybody, the pool's open to everyone.
Okay, to everyone in the town? So it's a town facility?
It's a town pool, it's going to be open to everybody, yeah. I think it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful gathering spot for people, particularly younger children learning how to swim.
Okay, right, exactly, and everybody needs to know how to swim.
Yeah.
What about the master plan? What's, what's, what are some of the big bullet points on your master plan?
So, you know, we're working through the master plan. A lot of them has addressed capital needs in there. We actually, we're standing up soon a master plan implementation committee that's going to go through the master plan, look at like the big items that we can, we can go after, you know. I know that finances are tight right now, so my, my discussions with our liaison master plan is like, let's look, let's try to start with like the low-hanging fruit, things that we can get done the first couple of months or years into it, let's start there, and then we can tackle the bigger stuff down the road. But the planning board is, we're kind of running the master plan implementation project. Planning Board Member Gordon Carr, so one, he led the master plan effort, did a wonderful job. I mean, that's a wonderful document, something we needed, so that's going to be signed up soon.
Did the public weigh in on the master plan?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you had public hearings, or you had, you had people, did they take a survey? I mean, how did, how did you come up with the components of your master plan?
We had a number of visioning sessions that were open to the public, you know, and they were, and they were focused on different areas. We had visioning centers, we had visioning, we had community surveys, we had open meetings, obviously.
Super, okay.
Everything was open meeting.
So you had a lot of, a lot of...
A lot of feedback. They now incorporate a lot of that into the plan. And the committee itself was, had a lot of different people from different areas, like we had, you know, we had people at large, we had a REC, we had a senior center person at the time, Center for Active Living now. We had planning people, we had zoning people, we had, so it was a large effort to put that together, but it came out really, really was well done.
Good, okay. So let's talk about economic development, because every town has, has this huge problem with taxes, and we don't want to raise your taxes, but your expenses are going up every year. So a couple of questions. Do you have the same tax rate for, for residents and businesses? You do, you don't have a split tax rate.
We don't, and, you know, we, that, every year that comes up, the assessors bring that to our attention about, do we split the rate or not? I have always felt like I'm going to keep the rate the same, because our downtown is very special, and those are small business owners, and, you know, we're not, the economy's been very volatile lately, so I felt like we need to kind of try to do our best to help them succeed, and I was nervous about a split tax rate, some putting more burden on them could really impact our downtown. That's already got a lot of open spots down there, so I don't want to, I want to do everything I can from my viewpoint to support them. Also, if we were to split the rate, where we have commercial bases, really South Hingham and Derby Street shops and the shipyard, right? Hingham doesn't have a lot of commercial.
That's it, right, no, you don't.
So I was concerned about those shops as well, so we've kept it the same. The assessors actually come in with a recommendation, we keep it the same, but my six years, I've always voted to keep it, keep it the same.
So for housing, there's not a lot of open housing in, in Hingham, as in a lot of towns on the South Shore, but the assessed values of the houses are just through the roof.
Oh, yeah.
All the towns, just crazy. And so your taxes are based on your assessed value, correct?
Correct, yeah, probably.
So how do you circle that square? For, for young people who grew up in Hingham, and now they want to buy a house or a condo in Hingham, and there's just no way they can do it.
It's really hard, right? So, I mean, prices are going up in town significantly, you know, it's a great community to live in, and I think that's reflective of the property values. I mean, most houses go, you know, over a million dollars, right? Not all of them, but I think a lot of houses are going up to that level, so it's really hard to do it. A lot of friends of mine that I grew up with, they have houses here now, but other folks that I know who lived here, yeah, have said to me, it's really getting difficult to afford a house there. So, you know, we, from what we can do, we do our best, you know, to address tax needs as they arise, but, yeah, it's definitely a problem that we have with being focused on, on keeping the house prices lower. We do have an Affordable Housing Trust.
I was just going to ask you that, yeah.
Wonderful. We have an Affordable Housing Trust. We do have a lot of efforts toward affordable housing that, you know, that we put CPC money towards, that we put town meeting resources towards, but they can only do so much, right? But it's an issue on the South Shore, I mean, all the towns, yeah.
What about ADUs? Do you have any ADUs?
We do have, we do have ADUs in town, town meeting passed out a couple of years ago, so we do have ADUs.
Do you have many?
Not many have taken advantage of it, yeah, some have. So a lot, a lot have built on, you know, there's two types of ADUs, are detached, attached. A lot have put attached structures on to keep aging parents in or disabled children, right? So that's, that is a component that we've seen increasing. In terms of the detached ADU, no, a couple, a couple, yeah, but there are there, but that is allowed under a bylaw, and obviously, the state has passed a lot of legislation that also makes it a state requirement as well, that towns have that.
Exactly, that you have to allow that, yeah. Now, the school budget is, is, most towns, the school is 50% to 65% of the budget is the schools. You have an older population in Hingham that's getting older, because younger people cannot move in, correct? So do you see that that's, the need for a larger school budget will decrease over the next five to 10 years, simply because you're not going to have the influx of young families with young children?
Yeah, that's a great, a great question. I mean, I don't know, there's no plans to decrease the school budget. In fact, I think, in some ways, you know, the cost of government is getting more, right? So collective bargaining agreements are costing towns more, either whether it be police unions, fire unions, teacher unions, you know, we want to make sure we pay our people well, at least as well as we can. And we, we had like, you know, a real robust discussion with our teacher union about two years ago, and, you know, I wish we could pay them all, you know, $200,000 if we could, but we do try to do the best we can with the money we have. I know the school department and the last collective bargaining brought up the teacher salaries, they brought, they raised the paraprofessional salaries, wish we could do that even more, but we are doing the best we can to accommodate their needs, you know, and the police, we're about to settle our police contract, our fire contract as well, we're not there yet, but, you know, we do try to pay our people the best we can, given the limited, you know, finances that we have.
Right, and with the school, there's, there's some unfunded mandates that you have to, you have to, the state says you have to do this, this, and this, and they don't pay you to do it, so you have to find the money to do it. The same thing with out-of-district costs, when you have to send a student out of district because you don't offer the specific programs that they need, those costs have skyrocketed for all of the communities. So that, that adds again to just another, another, another complicating factor in how do, how do you make it all work?
Yeah, that is a huge issue, right? The out-of-district costs are significant, millions, right? So what we did a couple of years ago, when we went to voters, asked for an override, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with our school department. So it was an agreement between Select Board Advisory Committee and the school committee, and said, if we, you know, if the tax, if taxpayers, you know, grant us this override and approve it, we would keep our growth to 3.5%. Now, when we first floated that school, the school committee and the school department, I was on Select Board at the time, I was Chair at the time, you know, they mentioned the out-of-district costs are significant. So what we did was, in that MOU, we relieved the burden of some of those costs. So a certain percentage of those costs come out of the municipal budget, so it doesn't impact the school budget. And I think that has really, really helped, helped, because you take, you know, a million dollars in costs away, and we use, you know, fund balance or other means to pay for that, it really, it's really helped the school department with their budget, with their budget issue, budget needs. But, yeah, that's, that was a huge point of discussion between the three boards, because